Good morning. October, Monday meeting. Are you expecting, I don't see Rhodes and I do see Gina, but are we waiting for Kathy? Okay. Okay. Well, I don't see Rhodes yet, so you might as well.
Good morning, Gina James, Health and Human Services. I think we are on for those financial reports quarterly.
Okay.
So I think October, I think October will be, Kathy will join us for those.
I think she mentioned that last week and I just forgot.
It's okay. Well, I came anyways, so.
Yeah.
Um, I, we did have one item we wanted to talk to the board about. Um, we have, we have an amendment that we've received to our consolidated contract with the Department of Health. Um, the amendment includes a couple of different things, so it's adding the second allocation of the FPHS funding. We received the first half of the allocation, I think in August. And now they've sent the second half. We usually see it in January. I think they've sent it early this year because um, this will be the year that we s- s- do a new contract. This is like a three-year contract. So I think they've sent it early this year because of that. Um, so it includes that, it includes a small amount for hepatitis B at work. Um, and then it is adding the funding for um, emergency preparedness and response. So that's a piece I wanted to touch base with the board on. I know we're not uh, refilling that position. And so we wanted to just kind of talk about, we, we still have this funding that's allocated in the contract. Um, we would use the funding to participate in different um, planning and coordinating um, meetings and activities with both the state and the regional level. So it would just be used to reimburse staff time within our capacity to participate and represent Callets at those different conversations and planning activities. So we just wanted to touch base and see if there's any issue with still accepting that funding or if you'd like us to do something different.
But, well, I think our decision was just on refilling the position.
Decision, okay.
Some of the work you do with them. I mean, it's probably one of those things you'll, you'll reimburse what you can and the rest of it, we just don't do anything with.
Right, whatever we don't spend, we'll just go back to the state, yeah.
So, so again, you'll perform the functions within existing staff?
Not all the functions we have been doing, but participate where we can in different planning activities.
Question, question on Hep B. Uh, what does that entail from your department viewpoint?
Yeah, so we work with, if there's, we don't, it's pretty rare, very rare. Um, we work with, it's specifically um, with women who are pregnant and they've tested positive for Hep B, then we would work with um, the mother-to-be to help make sure that it's not going, to try to prevent it getting passed to the child, to the unborn baby. So there's specific treatment and vaccination that can help prevent it from going to the mo- from the mother to the baby. So that's the.
So I'm, I'm still curious, so I'm a pregnant lady and I test positive for Hep B. That's my doctor who figured out that I've got Hep B, right?
Mm-hmm.
And at that point, my doctor is the one that talks to me and says, blah de blah de blah. Where does HHS enter in that chain?
So s- similar to other cases, so it would get, it would get reported to, as like notifiable to us. So we would be aware, um, we would follow up with that mother and maybe do some light case management to, the doctor may, I hope, has that conversation in the moment that they do that, but they don't always have the ability to do some follow-up and, and have additional conversations. So that's, would be where we would, could help with that and maybe meet with the mother and have more follow-up conversation. I see Carol popping on too.
So, so Gina, the cases are reported by the doctors' offices?
Right.
But low-income families usually don't go to doctors. Wha- what other ways is Hep C or hepatitis reported other than doctor? I mean, if you don't go to the doctors, you don't find out about it, so.
Right. I mean, that's primarily the way, if they're in the hospital for some reason or have visited their doctor's office.
Wait, wait, wait. This, this, this is a rabbit hole. If, if you don't know you have Hep B unless you're in the hands of some health professional and the health professional, regardless how he gets paid, is going to report to you.
Right.
The problem. So I, I still don't know then, so you deal with indigent people only for Hep B follow-up?
No, no. No, it's not, not just low, no, it's not just low-income individuals.
That doesn't, I don't understand where the value added is and.
It's just additional follow-up to encourage that testing, additional conversations with primary care about how they can prevent the spread of it, from it going from mother to baby. I don't know, Carol, if you have anything else to add?
Sure, can you hear me okay?
Yes.
Oh, good. Um, yes, uh, so we do this, we actually already do this work regardless of whether we get this funding or not. They're just offering us the funding to help pay for what we do that's already mandated. Um, even though it seems like a primary care or an OBGYN would understand perihepatitis B, so hepatitis in a pregnant woman, they don't always understand it or know exactly how to treat it or how to prevent it in the newborn because it's so rare. We see maybe one a year, occasionally two, but it's, it's, it's pretty unusual and um, we end up giving a lot of technical assistance to the healthcare provider. Um, and then making sure that there's, there's work actually after the baby is born that has to be done to follow up to make sure certain medications are being taken and the baby is not still at risk, um, or the mother gets lost to follow up. So we do a lot more chasing around, if you will, of the, of the mother and the baby after the baby is born than a physician might do, because sometimes, you know, once the baby's born, um, some folks don't always follow up with primary care like they should and we, it's our role, it's mandated that we follow that mom and the baby for about, I think it's a year, um, to make sure that the baby's being treated. If the baby has, ends up with hepatitis, the goal is to prevent it, but sometimes that doesn't happen because they get late prenatal care.
Who, who mandates this? You said you're man- you're mandated?
It's a note of, one of our notifiable conditions and we're required to follow through with pregnant moms and babies that are perihepatitis B. So if a mom has hepatitis B, part of our mandate is to follow that mom through.
So you can show me an RCW that says that or?
I think I can. Um, I'll have to double-check, but um, it is something that is required to do um, for the health of the mom and the baby.
Okay, now you're not, it's, this confuses me. It seems, how many dollars are we talking about with this?
Five hundred.
Mm-hmm. They're only giving us five hundred dollars to go for the work, but we do more work than that, but um, I think they allocated this based on two years ago's one case or something like that. Um, but it's just money to go towards the work that we already do.
Boy, five hundred dollar item just doesn't seem worth a discussion.
The state's being so helpful in giving us five hundred dollars.
I, I know this sounds awful to say that, but it's.
I suppose there's a positive side to it. It's only five hundred dollars because it's not a significant problem.
So do we?
It's not spreading anyway.
Yeah. Do we have a hep A or Hep C problem? Is, I mean, are you going to come back next year with a?
Hep D, how many letters can we do?
Actually, I think there is like hepatitis D and E. I don't know anything about those, but um, I don't know anything about those. But hepatitis B is the big one, I think, that is dangerous for babies.
And uh, just for my own curiosity, then if I deliver a baby with Hep B, what's the prognosis if left unattended for Hep B?
That's probably a really good Dr. Craigor question. Um, and you'll see him tomorrow at the Board of Health. I don't know all the clinical implications.
Tomorrow is a whole new day. I'll, I'll not remember this.
Well, I don't know the clinical pieces very well.
I'll have Kelly, I said, can you replay that tape from yesterday for Commissioner Morrison?
Yeah.
Well, that, that kind of raises the, the, a process question. We have a Board of Health. But you've come to us with a request for spending. But you haven't informed the Board of Health for their advice. I would, I would think, this is, since we have this independent Board of Health, I would think the process should be changed so that they get informed when these things happen, so that they're aware of the different programs that we're being asked to fund and have that discussion with them, because but, I mean, you know, we haven't decided to do that. We ultimately have the responsibility to pass, you know, the budget and the spending is our responsibility, but um, I, I would think that would certainly honor the Board of Health's responsibility to provide oversight in terms of the medical doctor and the, and the policies.
That's a, that, that's a good discussion. I don't know where it would fall, but i- i- in this case, I mean, I look at the Board of Health being one step higher than this and that accordingly to the information we got, it's an RCW, it's a mandate and I've figured that the Board of Health can't tell, can't tell you something that would change that activity that you're involved in, but they might communicate with the legislature, so uh, it's, i- i- it is something to be worked out. It'll be worked out. I think like things are worked out in the, in, in the courts by actual cases that set the case law.
Just a synopsis, so I understand what's, we're, we're getting the second half of a contract that's still, still in, probably the last year of a contract. Included to that is still the emergency preparedness, though we haven't filled that position. You still have some things you, you do with it and they've added five hundred dollars for this Hep B.
Correct, yep.
Yeah, the way I see the emergency preparedness, and thank you for the synopsis, is there's still stuff you will do.
Mm-hmm.
Just staff, the current staff will absorb it in some way.
In some way, yes. And, and it'll be more, you know, more limited capacity than what we've been able to do.
Right.
Yeah, so, but we'd still like to be at the table, yeah.
And presumably that helps the lack of the staff member, helps you prioritize what you have to do, which is always a, an issue. It's like, we do a lot that we don't have to do, or do we? That kind of thing.
Yeah, so we'll have.
We're good with him, yeah.
Okay, so we'll have that amendment, uh, maybe next week or the week after on the agenda. And I noticed I'm on, Health and Human Services is on the agenda item review piece as well, but we don't have anything on the agenda tomorrow, besides, I mean, we'll be here for Board of Health, but.
You, uh, have you talked to the chairman of the Board of Health and you've got a, a presentation or anything you're doing?
Yeah, we're going to revisit that, that list of potential priority areas.
Oh, good.
Just have some more discussion on that.
The latter part is the interesting part, uh, the, the discussion, so, yeah.
Yeah, I know we'll have new members so that we, you know, we might want to take some, take some more time, so that's, yeah, totally fine. Yeah, so.
Next Monday, Tuesday, I won't be here, just so you're aware.
Okay.
Next Monday and Tuesday?
I have to plan ahead.
Okay, thank you.
How about you, Dennis? Should we have next Monday, Tuesday, unless I'm not here?
No, I'm, I'm in for the long haul.
Well, yeah, that's, that's not true. What, what did you say last week? A hundred, what, a hundred and twenty-one days or something you threw out?
Whoever's counting, yeah.
Thanks, Gina.
Actually.
Rhodes on here, but I don't see him, so I don't know if there was.
Should we have a clock in the, in, in the clerk's office of the day clock?
Yeah. Yeah, countdown.
Yeah. Dennis, we haven't, haven't seen you at the uh, LCC debates in the, uh, for the two commissioner seats. Did you view them after the fact?
No.
No? Let the chips fall where they may?
Chips fall where they may.
He's weaning himself off of this stuff. It's a good idea. So, did you guys want to think about, did you want to do a table again?
I.
I don't even know. Do you, does Kelly know how much it? Yeah, why don't you ask her? Is it eight seats? I think it's, was. Is it eight seats? I think it's, was.
Dennis, while, uh, we have a pause, what? Can you give us an update or would you be willing to give us an update on what's going on with the Saint, Mount St. Helens Institute?
They, they're in sort of a, um, mixed use status right now. The institute is offering very limited outdoor school activities there. And, um, but they're also sharing the space with the Forest Service because Johnston Ridge is still gonna be shut down. So this still become, so they're, they're using the building for both, you know, tourism as well as the, the outdoor school.
We'll, we'll see that, um, is it tomorrow?
And then tomorrow is that, that, um, workshop with the legislators up there. Because ultimately the institute wants, wants to get the funding to upgrade it so that they can offer full day, full week camps. Um, and they, there has been, um, considerable interest, particularly from the Vancouver area schools for whom the, the trip up to Sisbos is, is kind of cost prohibitive. And, um.
Because Sisbos is too far away?
Because, yeah, that is, it is too far. And it's also very crowded. It's hard to get into. I mean, that's scheduling is a little bit difficult. So this is an opportunity. They also are, um, able to attract, uh, school districts from the greater Portland area as well. And their state actually pays for outdoor school, outdoor education. So that's another, um, probably more, even more secure funding once they get the building or facility, uh, upgraded to handle overnight stays.
When we were there last year, it was first time for me at that facility and that, that was pretty interesting. They, they, they bring in the yurts or their, their year along. They were gonna expand a number of yurts, right?
There, they were gonna build, they have plans to build cabins around that parking lot. Yeah, because the, the existing facility doesn't have the capacity for showers.
It, it's not built for that.
No, it is built for that. So, um, so with, with the cabins, that will be available during the school years, you know, for the outdoor school. And then it'll be available for family groups, uh, people who, adults who attend uh, the, the institute's adult education program, which they don't do too much of right now because they don't have the overnight stays. But the, it is, um, the, the plan is once upgraded, then that facility can, can be um, the overnight facility in the Mount, Mount St. Helens area. There currently is no overnight facility. You have to go down to Mark Smith's Eco Park. And, and that's, that's still a bit of a journey away. So.
Yeah.
Yeah. So that's, that's the latest that I've heard. And we'll hear a little bit more about it when we get to, to tomorrow, I think, too.
Okay.
Hear their latest plan. Now. Wrong one, sorry.
At least you're not trying to use your shoe.
Yeah.
So annual luncheon is four hundred and fifty bucks for a table. And there's eight people at the table. Last year it was three of us, our staff, I think Tracy went. And I don't know if we have other department heads.
I'm good with whatever you want, that.
Sounds good.
So it was something like the Mount St. Helens Institute.
Oh, oh, I wanted, I, when I was interrupted with the phones ringing. We earlier talked with Ray Yakowitz. He's left the program.
Oh, he, he did.
No longer with the program.
Really?
No, Alyssa Hoyt, I'm not sure if you, uh, met, had a chance to meet her.
I think she was new the last time.
She was, yeah, she's been pretty new. So, and I haven't heard why, why Ray left. That's.
I got you.
So.
So if I ask who the champion is, it would be Alyssa Hoyt then?
Alyssa Hoyt, yes.
Okay. And then typically, I mean, this sounds like a pretty useful thing to do just to, it, it's got a lot of positive aspects. But it, in time, things degrade if we don't have a proper management. Who manages like all these activities?
So the Manhattan, so Mount St. Helens Institute is a separately organized, separate organization. They have a board of directors, primarily of folks from Clark County. And they're, they're, they're the ones that oversee the operations. It's all done in collaboration with the Forest Service because the Forest Service owns the building and they've, they're leasing it. Okay. So the Forest Service is gonna be involved as well. I would imagine once they establish the formal week-long outdoor school, then the superintendent of public schools will have some kind of oversight in terms of, uh, the, the, the process of the program. Because all the school districts will be.
What I'm really angling at too is I, uh, the schools, despite their protestations to the contrary, have, my opinion, they have a lot of money. And, uh, the programs I've seen where, uh, people come into a, uh, an auditorium and give a talk to the kids, the right people can just enthral kids. It's worth the money. And this, I think it would be worth the money. So I would think funding would, should come from the, Department of Education.
The, uh, it's, it's an example of a private institution, which has a lot more flexibility in their operation.
Yeah.
Providing an, you know, an important service rather than the government creating another bureaucracy, which, you know, fifty percent of the funds go to staff or, or more. So.
That's kind of why I was asking, yeah.
I, I have, um, I participated in, um, the Yellowstone Institute. It's been years ago, but they had a, they, they had a program set up for families.
Up in Yellowstone?
At Yellowstone, right. And that was, that was absolutely fascinating. And then we're at Glacier National Park every year and there's a Glacier Institute as well. So this has begun to be adopted at many, um, government features across the country. These institutes that carry on this, uh, educational program because national government isn't in charge of education. Yeah. So, uh, I, it's, it's the right kind of combination of that private, private-public partnership that I think we should be always encouraging.
Had a little excitement at Yellowstone this year, didn't they? With one of the geysers or something getting a little rambunctious taken out? I mean, that is a active volcano.
It is, yes. Yep.
I told you, I was in New Zealand and I toured, uh, Hot Springs. There's hundred yards from, from a geyser is this four-story hotel.
Oh, my gosh.
I mean, I'm thinking.
Yeah.
No, it's not a, a old faithful size, but it, there's, in the mud pools, it's bubbling. You can tell and it's.
Yeah.
It's hot. And then every now and then you get a. I guess whatever you get used to, huh?
If Yellowstone ever goes, half the RVs in the country will be gone.
I think maybe the. Maybe the world will go.
Yeah.
Well, you know, it's interesting. There was a big controversy about ten years ago. About, um, the reintroduction of wolves.
Okay.
So you won't have anything till ten. Okay.
And, and the reintroduction of wolves, to Yellowstone was very controversial. They did it and within a year, the, the rivers became much more attractive and, 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 uh, clean flowing. They said, well, what, what wolves have to do with it? Well, the wolves kept down the elk herds, the elk. They overpopulated, nibbled away all the brush and the, and the branches and the trees next to the rivers. And the pollution didn't have a chance to get filtered out. And they said, very interesting, we hadn't realized that the water quality would improve with the, with the wolves came back in. The ranchers just outside the park are still angry because they still go after the, uh, the, the easier to catch livestock game.
The wolves will curtail the population. I saw a deal in Idaho and I haven't, I'd have to look in and make sure it's accurate data. But before the introduction of wolves, they estimated about thirty-two thousand elk and now they're down to about sixteen hundred, they say.
I saw that, yeah.
Uh, I don't know the numbers behind it, so.
It seems a bit too dramatic.
It, it, it feels a bit strong, but.
Yeah.
Well, and that will make them more difficult to hunt. Because you've got the strongest, the most intelligent animals that are surviving, the wolf kill. So.
Um, I find it a difficult decision. Everything we do has unintended ramifications. And then human nature, the, the term is reverting to the mean. So like as we struggle to curtail the, the wandering of the toodle and the cowlets, and even the clamor.
When you say returning to the mean, you're referring to numbers rather than feelings.
Correct. Yeah. Yeah. Or just, uh, just the, human nature includes the live stuff and the dead stuff. The topography and, uh, we, we try very hard to control things sometimes and it's always, I always wonder, like specific here, Mount St. Helens blew. There was nothing we could have done to prevent the blowing. Now that it's blown, there are side effects from there. How hard should we struggle to protect the banks of what used to be the cowlets or used to be the toodle? Uh, and then Spirit Lake and all that. And I, I don't know the answer to that. We put a lot of effort to freeze things like we like them. But Mother Nature is, is.
She's pretty powerful for, she.
Yeah.
Kinda does what she's gonna do.
Yep.
Well, I think the, um, the construction of the levees, Longview and Kelso, uh, is where you start. Without those levees, you, you don't have very good flood protection. And, and there are some businesses around Kelso that have pictures of the nineteen thirty-three flood.
Yeah.
Which was the last one. I, I think that was before the, the levees were built in Kelso. And it was massive flooding.
Yeah, you don't have a lot of Kelso. You probably don't have Lexington.
Well.
Well, I'm, I was.
Lexington, you wouldn't have most of Longview. Most of Longview is, is downhill from here, right?
Yeah.
Literally, and, and.
I was thinking of New Orleans.
Yeah.
Where they're built below sea level.
Right.
Yeah, that's, that's crazy.
And then.
So, so the, the elevation of the streets around Lake Sacagawea are, is, from what I understand, is about seventeen feet. And it goes down from there, the farther out you get until it gets out to about three and four. That's one of the reasons you have to have those dikes because we know every spring when the rains come, the rivers fill up. And, uh, back in the, in the pioneer days before Longview was, was built up at all, at the spring tides, that's what they call them, the steamships would take a shortcut between, uh, Mount Solo and, and Columbia Heights to get down the Columbia River. So there was a lot of water flowing out this way.
Yeah. And then we got Holland.
So, so the, so the, the remarkable thing is if properly maintained, the dikes last, they've lasted for a hundred years. Which is only a blink in, in geological history, but in, in terms of its impact here. It's like the story of humans is the story of adapting and adjusting. And we can do that. We've got the technology to do that.
So speaking of the flooding risk today versus a hundred years ago, uh, tie that with your, your thinking about the dams.
So for us on the Calis River, the, the critical elements from the, it's two, there's two rivers that affect us. The hydroelectric, the huge hydroelectric dams on the Columbia River are all part of the, the effort to control floods, which they've done a pretty good job of. Then we have the dams, the two dams on, in Lewis County that control the, the, the Calis. And they have to, they have to intentionally, uh, set the reservoirs to, to adjust to the weather and the rainfall.
Or expected weather.
So they don't, what they don't want to, what they don't want to be in is a situation where they haven't lowered the reservoirs for the rainy season. And then that's when there's too much water that comes down.
Yeah.
And you have places like Calis Garden that still to this day doesn't have, uh, levees for protection. And, and when that happens, they, they do get the floodwaters.
True.
It's a huge caveat. If the levees are operated and maintained all the time.
They were, yeah.
Last time there was flooding inside the city of Longview, it turns out that the Dyke District had failed to inspect the culverts and somebody had thrown a mattress into the dyke because you dump stuff in, they used to jump all kinds of stuff. And it literally plugged one of the dikes. And everything above that, that plug got flooded.
Yeah.
Nineteen seventy-seven. So the record is pretty good. The Dyking staff got fired. You know, it was pretty, pretty embarrassing that we had, and, and around that same time, there was a problem with a, a pump fail. I think it was a pump failure out in Lexington. And they had the problems with the flooding then too. I mean, the main, the main, uh, the main body of water draining, um, Lexington is called McCorkle Creek. And it comes off of, of Columbia Heights near, um, near, uh, the intersection of, of Columbia Heights Road and Long, Lone Oak Road. And so it drains a tremendous area. And it is, uh, lower than the Columbia River or the Calis River most of the year. So, uh, those pumps have to be maintained.
When Mount St. Helens blew, I would have expected, uh, well, regardless, but after the blowing of the top, uh, what impacts did the dams feel in, on the cowlets? See, I'm thinking of.
Dams didn't get, dams did not get affected.
They don't build up more silt?
Um, well, there, there, there are no dams between Mount St. Helens and the ocean.
Okay. All right.
So that didn't, they, that didn't, uh, have, have any impact. Um, we, um, the Columbia River Shipping Channel did get stopped because the, the sediment did fill up the shipping channel. And there was, uh, there was a short period of time and ships did not get to Portland.
Oh, really?
Yeah. I mean, it was, it was filled up. I mean, right in the immediate aftermath. And so they knew they had to dredge there and that was when they, they started dredging there and they started dredging up the Calis River. They dredged up to where the LTs are, which is where that, that material all came from. And, and that, of course, is very, very expensive because you have to figure out where to store it. Where's the property? And they're not making more property. So we've got most of the spots filled in. And, uh, so the corps said, we'll keep as much of it up above with this huge dam. And they estimated, they estimated we, we'd need to build a thirty-story dam. And.
Again, going back to the issue, what is it we should be preserving?
Yeah.
The question back on the dam is the dams are, uh, places where the silt actually builds up unless they intentionally keep it flushed, I guess. Do we have, you know, whether they do routine flushes and stuff like that? I, with that intent?
I, I, I don't know for sure. The sediment is gonna be the material that sinks down. The intake for the dams are usually higher up. Because it's that gravity is what gives the power to turn the generators. So the dams, so, but I, but I'm not, I'm, you know, I'm no expert on that. So I'm.
No, I think the, the, uh, the, the maximum power is at the. basis of the dam, so I would think the outfall from the dam is down low.
I do know that virtually all of the dams of the 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 southern part of the Calis or the Columbia Rivers all have shipping channels. So it's, you know, they they have locks. So you can have barges and you see the advertisements on TV about the cruise ships that go
Yeah.
From Lewiston out to Astoria.
Oh, we got public works here.
Well, they don't have anything on roads where we have a ten o'clock, so you're here for ten, yeah.
Oh, well, if you have something to present to us.
On the roads?
Okay, sounds good.
You know, this reminds me, uh times I've tuned in to C-SPAN, they focus on the speaker. And then eventually they pan to the empty room and then they focus.
So Susan Eugenia's Public Works, sorry about the confusion. We thought uh we were not presenting roads today, so I don't have anything prepared and that that's why I apologize for not being here. I can give you an update on where we are with twenty twenty four construction. Um, so unfortunately, and as per normal, not everything went out this year. Um, we did complete two older projects quickly. Um, the Kalama River Road Culvert Project and the Slide Creek Realignment, both of those. One was completed in five days and the other, I believe, was a grand total of nine days. So we were very pleased with both of those projects, they got in and out. Eric Creek Culvert, so that's on Abernathy, Abernathy Creek Road, that is still underway. Uh, the pipe arches were delivered last week, I believe, so they're finishing up uh the foundation and putting the channel in because it's, so we have a concrete foundation and then we have a pipe arch over top, so the pipe arch did arrive finally, and they're getting that set up to connect and then they'll um finish up the construction, re-get the road back going and the creek back back flowing.
Again, that's that's a, that was a situation where the culvert that went under Coal Creek Road had a like a six to ten foot drop because of erosion and undercutting.
Yes, there was a substantial drop downstream, um and it's a fairly steep, so the reconstructed culvert, they're um that we reconstruct the channels when we do this, so there's some work upstream and downstream of the channel to give a consistent uh run through the stream and it simulate it based on what the slopes are upstream and downstream of that.
How do you do that? You bring in fill?
Yes, you bring in stream channel material, simulate it stream channel. Uh, so when we're doing the design, they go out and they take, and I can't remember the name of the samples where they go up and they take grams, grab samples of various locations upstream and downstream of the culvert. And they do a gradation of that, so once they do that gradation, you have, you need twenty five percent of boulder or rocks from this side to this size and on down, and then you spray some sand in to help cement it all in place. And they are generally rounded rock, not what.
You don't mean cement.
Not cement cement, but kind of hold it in place. It's not true cement, it's just a binder.
But it's a, it's a natural binder.
Yes, it's a sand binder, so. Um, so that's how we do that and they simulate the stream. Uh, some places, depending on how far you go upstream and downstream, so when we did the Delometer Road Project, uh we actually the creek came down and ran parallel to the road four ways. So we pulled that away from the road, so it wasn't running parallel, and we added some sinuosity to the channel, um simulating what it was in other locations before we sent it under the road. So there's all kinds of computer programs and then you do stream bed simulation and put in some trees to hold the banks.
Harkening back to the earlier conversation and flood preparedness. When you're down in the LA area and you drive over the LA River, I remember thinking some strange things when I came from the East Coast driving through Joshua Tree National Forest. I don't see any trees. And then, and then you were in LA, LA of the of the river, yeah, you're look looking and it's, it's a huge, I don't know, maybe uh it's at least probably a hundred yards wide and maybe twenty yards tall walls. And in the middle is a little channel and there's a little trickle of water going through the middle. The capacity of that thing is enormous. But.
But when the rain happens, it fills, yeah, it's pretty.
I have never seen it filled, but it that's, you know, anyhow.
There was a tremendous amount of building and construction in the thirties, part of the Public Works Projects and putting people back to work.
In SoCal?
Yeah, yeah, well, well, throughout the country actually, but in in Southern California. And one of, one of the big ones was building Boulder Dam, now called Hoover Dam.
Yeah.
And it turns out that they sized it wrong. Because the engineers had studied the rainfall. And it turns out that over time, that was the exception, exceptionally high
Oh.
High year, so they.
Which is why they always tell you that your rainfall, like the FEMA FERMAPs, the hundred year, that changes every year because we get a little more data. And then so it's a simulation and so it it varies every year, which is why, what, the ninety six floods started off as a hundred and twelve? No, it's a, you know, and they've changed it based on the data that they collect. It's very interesting. Stream simulation is a art, uh an art, a science, that's an art because.
Art, science and scam.
So it's, it's one of the, it's actually interesting and the evolution, so when I started doing it in the um nineties, we were still on an old floor tram program where you had to get it just right in the, so all your side slopes and your bottom points, and if you got anything wrong, the whole thing blew up and it took all day to run. Now they do the same thing with AutoCAD drawings and they just pull it in and they can run in a day what would have taken me two months to do. Um, it just changing little variables. It's amazing how much that has changed. But it's still, if you don't put good information in, you'll get bad information out and it's also you still need people who understand how the program works, because they will recognize weird oddities as they come out.
That reminds me, you're familiar with FFTs?
I'm pardon.
FFTs?
FFTs?
Fast. That's why I call them FFTs. Fast Fourier Transforms. Just about everything you ever touch in modern day has some fundamentals of transforms. And they're like eigenvectors and eigenvalues and they're, they were very computationally heavy until a guy figured out how to do it with some very strange scheme. How he figured it out, I think, required help from upstairs. And it 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 took the computational load down from being N squared, number of points, to N log base two of N.
Yeah, it.
Yeah, it's, it it was engineering talk here for fun. You know Fourier because he did a lot of work on heat transfer.
And there's all kinds of weird series he created and, yeah.
Heat transfer is pretty important in engineering.
Yes, my husband reminds me of it frequently because he's a mechanical engineer and he, it's way more important for him than for a civil engineer.
Yeah. Except on a hot day.
Yes, when our asphalt starts to buckle.
Yes.
Or it freezes and that does other bad things.
So if we drove a while away out to Eric Creek?
Yes.
What, what would we be seeing right now? Is the road still intact or?
So currently there's a bypass road, so you'll get out there and you'll swing around and you'll see this big gaping hole, for lack of a better term, with foundation poured and they're putting channels in. I think they put the ch- stream channel material in while they were waiting for the culvert, because it's easier to do it when it's empty. The creek is currently bypassed, so it goes through a pu- a pipe, so you don't see the creek um right now, because it's in a pipe. As soon as they get the culvert top back on and enough material on it, they will release the creek. Hopefully before we get too much rain. So that that is what you'd see right now, um we're anticipating by sometime in November, the road being back where it's supposed to be and hopefully getting asphalt on it before the plant closes for the winter.
Are we gonna be dry enough into November?
Well, once you get the channel itself back open, um it's more of a tidying up work and, you know, building the section back up and there's guardrail that needs to go out, so the complete project, uh once you get out of the creek is um can be done in a little wetter of weather. So we should be seeing coming up, we're working on the final specs for South Cloverdale. We'll send those off, so we should be uh going out to bid.
I think we have something tomorrow on that, on the consent agenda.
Yes, uh that's just some federal paperwork that we're pushing through on the consent tomorrow. So we're, we're working on a couple of jobs that'll be coming through early. That one to get good bids and then um guardrail for, because that's good winter work, because they're off of their summer construction. And it doesn't need to be dry to put guardrail in, so we're looking at getting those out. And sediment retention structure, it does have a outfall at the top because it's made made to hold sediment and at some point it's a stream run uh dam. Uh, there's no lower outfall on that one.
It's not a generating.
No, it's not a generator, so it was meant to hold the water back.
Many years ago now, many is not that many by my life standard, um maybe ten years ago, there was a gentleman that was trying to push the concept of putting uh generators inside the the supports for uh for bridges, you know, right now they build something and he got, he pressed it hard enough that he got attention at the federal level, I think. Do you have any information on that?
I I don't, do not, I don't have any information.
So you know, the river has to go around.
The piers, yeah.
Why don't you put a generator inside there? And I don't know that we have to make that very complicated, but and and still make it pay off.
Yeah.
I don't have many information about that.
But anything that impedes the flow of the river will, the river will sink.
It'll cause, yeah.
You know, ways around. An unimpeded route, so without the the drop in gravity, you don't have the force to to get the river to behave the way you want it to. And that's what I think where, the the concept sounds good. But the practicality, I think, falls falls apart, because there's such even though it seems like it's very minor resistance, it it undercuts the the feasibility of making much predictable power.
To put the, to put the generator in there?
Yeah.
I'd have to look at that more closely. It doesn't strike me as I I'd be I, you're not gonna get power out of there to generate for a a city or something like that. So I would think uh that it would be useful for like the bridge needs a little lighting at night, say, you just generate your own lighting through there. Uh, that eliminates a whole complication of how do you get onto the grid? I don't know, but yeah. It hasn't gone anyplace.
The concept seems simple enough.
Yeah.
But then you have to ask, well then, why hasn't it been done? From day one, I mean, if if it if it could work out, because utilities are powerful, but they're not that, they're not that powerful. We should, we should all have generators if you have a stream and it isn't. In fact, those areas where they used to connect streams to factories, water wheels, those went out because they just couldn't generate enough to to sustain the operation. But I don't know.
I know if I had a stream and I could legally do so, I'd be, I'd be tapping it. In terms of tapping stream, too, the amount of energy that we lose when the Columbia empties into the Pacific is enormous. Did you ever hear about uh the Red Sea, you you dam, you dam it up and there's enough evaporation in the Red Sea area that you could get quite a head there and you'd have in ten years or five years, you get enough of a head to generate a monstrous amount of electricity and it would be barring the real world, it would be essentially uh unlimited in lifetime. Of course, the Red Sea would no longer be habitable, but that's hey, oceanographers have tons of ideas.
As if we don't have enough problems in the Middle East anyway, you have to take away the Red Sea. So those are the big three?
Big three, we're finishing up striping, finish up overlay, which we, I'll talk about in a little bit. Um, for this summer, yes, um unfortunately, South Cloverdale didn't get off as early as we thought, nor did Dyke Road.
How's it looking for hiring engineers? Still bad?
Still bad, unfortunately.
How many resumes do you have on your desk now?
Well, I have one that's a resident of India. And I have, of India, yes, and then I have another who we set up an interview with and he called the day of the interview and had already obtained another.
I didn't understand a word you said.
So the second uh application we had, we called the day we got the application, we set up an interview for the next week. And the day of the interview, he called and declined because he already had another offer. Those were all June, July, and I have not received anything since.
We have those. Don't we have a couple of contracts with firms that help us out?
Yes.
Do they help in these type of situations or are they more specific to project?
Uh, those were specifically for development review. Um, we're tossing around another couple of ideas that we might be bringing forward to you that we've done um for other positions, uh the surveyor most recently, and the other cities do and counties do it where they um contract with a company and one of their engineers becomes your engineer for a day or two a week. Um, we're, we're tossing that around as a possibility.
We can't get applications.
Yeah, so we're really struggling. So that is a possibility we might pursue.
That sounds good.
So.
Is there a camaraderie between uh Public Works of the County and the other municipal Public Works?
They are also busy also, they don't have capacity to um.
No, but when when they come up with ideas, do you guys meet and just say we found this thing and we'd like to know what you think about it?
So we, I meet on occasion with the cities for different things. Um, I'm also a member of the um State Association of County Engineers. Um, I'm on their board and then we have a couple of meetings a year. They are, um we always have two West Side meetings. There are frequent um email series where we'll send out, hey, I'm really struggling. One of the most recent one was with a franchisee that did not want to move. Um, and so a bunch of us were spitballing ideas on how to get them to move or how others have successfully gotten them to move when a project is coming.
The chairman has a solution to those, it's a stick of dynamite. It solves a lot of problems.
Well, I was told when it was a telecom, that is a very bad thing, because that's a federal problem now. If it was not a telecom, as long as I didn't blow a big hole in the road because it was gas, I'd probably be okay. Now, if it was not a telecom, as long as I didn't blow a big hole in the road because it was gas, I'd probably be okay. So those, yes, we do talk to other jurisdictions. Um, you look at other jurisdictions, I've been looking at other counties, uh, most of them have one, if not more, engineering positions open. County, cities throughout the whole area have um everything from county engineers to fresh out of school engineers, senior transportation engineers, water sewer uh engineers. And then you talk to the consultants and they also have a hard time keeping their positions filled. So it's a career-wide issue. Um, we also have a lot of people that are approaching retirement, um, not just in our office, but across the industry.
The thing with engineering is uh it's difficult to make up for all that lost expertise. You stretch out of school and understand a lot of things like a fast forty-eight transform, but it doesn't mean that you know how to build a road.
That is very, very true, you don't know how much you don't know when you come out of college. I mean, it's, it's the difference between someone who's been working four years and somebody who's been working thirty years is immense. Even somebody working twenty years versus the four years, the difference is immense. The, this four-year person can get there, but it takes a while, um, because you see more and more as you're doing it. Um, and get to know other people and who to ask the questions to, so.
It's actually a very nice synergistic thing, the fresh person out of school has up-to-date info on something that, and, and you've got the real-life experience, uh, it works well. Before we go, I forgot to ask, can you get me the timber employment per county for?
The, the map, the map that we, that I set out, that we set out? When was the map of the counties, that all the different counties, how much?
No, uh, the, the number of employees?
Yes, that came from WASAC.
Oh, did you send it out?
Yeah, I sent that out. Maybe a month ago, has it been that long ago? I can redo it, it was, it was for the Timber Caucus, the Timber County Caucus. Yeah, we, we presented that to, um, I presented that to the Council Economic Development Council last week, so. Yeah.
We're, we're ten, and you wanna just head into the agenda items, since, since you're already at the table, we'll just.
Sure, I'll be happy to go first, let's see, what do we have? So item number two is a consent agenda item, which was the, is the updated perspective and local agency agreement. Uh, we signed that, I don't know, about a month ago. Uh, Wash Dot came back with, oh, there's a mistake. We had them review it before we had you sign it the first time, they found something that they wanted us to change. We had it changed, we brought it to a Wednesday because of the timeline. Commissioner Dahl signed it and this is just documenting the real, update it. Um, just for other information on that, that project has made it through the state, made it up to federal highways and we have obligated our construction funding. So we made the deadline of September thirty, so that is good news that we'll get the specs done and get that out to bid. So that's good news on that.
And I was noticing that local match, that being less than ten percent of the overall project.
Yes, because of the way we had multiple funding sources.
And the, the change was not in our favor, it was, but it wasn't real significant, it was about, am I remember right, about twenty, twenty-three thousand?
Yeah, it was in the twenty to twenty-three thousand dollar range in their favor, but it was a minor.
This kind of funding package required a certain amount of creativity on your part and knowing where, who to submit to and, and being, is, do they cover that in coursework in universities?
No.
How to get stuff funded?
No, they do not.
One of those things you learn on the fly, basically.
They learn on the fly, we learn that on the fly and um like this particular project, we have CRAB, we have STP. Uh, the Coal Creek Project, which we have coming up, we have STP already obligated. We've applied for CRAB money, so we're getting that project, so it's a reasonable local match and we can do a decent court or otherwise, we have to really chunk them up. Um, currently this week, um, today, we have a grant due for aquatic organism passage where we're applying for two, um. That's what the federal government calls it, it's not fish passage, it's aquatic organism passage. So we're applying for that grant for two culverts out on Hazel Dell Road, so that's due this week. We're doing our notice of intent to apply for um brick funding, which is through FEMA, building resilient infrastructure. Oh, I forgot what the C stands for, um, in that program. So we're applying for um trying to get some money for um Toodle Park Road, um, moving that over to Burma, so we're doing that application. And then there's a flood, which is also a FEMA uh project that we're applying. We'll, we'll see how far we get on this, to do the initial study, a big alternatives analysis to do something with Westover and Lomar, um, because that has been a lingering problem. But it costs a lot of money to figure out what way you're gonna go and then we'll start working on funding, what we're going, what that solution comes up. So this week, Public Works is a busy um grant week, because that, everything seems to be due this week. So that's, we're constantly working on grants to keep these funding projects and projects moving along.
So during my time working with the Board of Directors at WASAC, we are always reviewing applications from county, uh, commission members for various boards and commissions, state boards and commissions, and I've shared some of the things, ones that I, that I've been working on. But CRAB also has an opening for engineers and, as well as county commissioners. Is it to our advantage to participate at that level?
Uh, probably, um, I am currently on the County Engineers Board. I am the president-elect, so from June of twenty-five through June of twenty-six, I will be the president um of the County Engineers Board through WASAC. I know that uh the Snohomish County Engineer, who is the current president, he's on the CRAB board and has been for a while. I don't remember what size position is open on the CRAB board. Cause I know they, and sometimes it's east side versus west side.
Right.
Um, and I don't remember which one is currently open. So it is, um, it's advantageous just to be on the boards and get those contacts within CRAB. I know one of the big things that CRAB is going to be pushing uh this legislative session, um, is a new program that they're hoping that we can get some money uh directed to the counties for our local streets. Um, because right now, the CRAB money can only go to arterials and collectors. So they wanna start a similar program for local streets and um they've got a call out right now and I need to get my information together of, um, they're calling it uh Miss Dungeness um, for pictures of roads that this is why they needed. And one of the ones I'm working on is getting them information about Young Road, which has had all that development pressure. And the county now needs to upgrade this road, but we, we don't have a funding mechanism. And so that, they're looking to try and feel that for a lot of counties, cause they have development pressure on roads or ones that they have not been able to upgrade uh moving forward. So that is one of the things CRAB is working on also, which they have heard from a lot of the counties. This program's great, but we also need to be able to, because a few years ago, they started allowing um what they call off-system bridges to apply for their funding, so off-system bridges means something not on our arterial or collector. And we have a lot of local bridges that are off-system. And that was way more than uh agenda review. Okay, so what else do we have on there? So we have on the uh motion, we have two motion items, we have change order number one with Lakeside Industries for the overlay project. Um, this is the addition, and we had talked about it when it happened uh this summer, when we got really hot, Little Clam River Road, the pavement started rolling up on the tires. Uh, we discussed with you a couple of methods of how we wanted to repair that. So this is the change order for Lakeside to go out and grind the one lane where the damages uh has occurred and then inlay uh hot asphalt on that. It's just, it's at a hundred and one thousand dollars, uh, using their bid item, their unit price bid items was the agreement. Um, so that is the change order number one for Lakeside. And the other item is the bid award to Northwest Linings and Geo, uh, Geo Textile Products for the scrim reinforced polyethylene geo membranes for a hundred and eighteen, three hundred. We received two bids and they were within two thousand dollars of each other. The successful bidder was um the bidder that has been successful in the past. And these prices are very similar to what we were paying last year, we did not see an increase. So we were very pleased with the bids we received.
We knew we were gonna have to do something with Clam River, you brought that to our attention.
Yes.
We just didn't know the dollar amount.
No, we did not, we had an estimate when we talked about it before and this is the, we pulled up all the quantities and this is what we're estimating, uh, they are, so we suspended them during the um I-five work uh, because all they had left was Green Mountain Road and this change order, so they have been on, they were suspended. They've worked us back into the schedule, so we're anticipating them being out at work the first week of October.
Speaking of Green Mountain, I bet those people are very happy, the bridge work is done.
Yes, um, so, and then we'll just disrupt them for about a day and a half to do the overlays in that area up there.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you, Susan. Looks like you just got the public hearing tomorrow, yeah?
Yep, good morning, uh, Tracy Jackson, Building and Planning Department, and with me today is Adam. And he is our new uh planning manager, so he will be presenting to you um the Comp Plan Amendment tomorrow. And that's just the Comp Plan Amendment, hundred and nine eight, hundred and eight acres, excuse me, between Walker and Carroll's Road area, sold, unused surface mine, we can use it for home development.
Are they um gonna be incorporating the remnants of the pit? Is part of their design features for developing that neighborhood, or have they gotten that far along in the process?
Thank you, uh, again, Adam Trimble, Building and Planning, and the, the property is gonna be family-owned. So they're, they're just intending to use it for the family at this point.
Oh, really?
And developing two, two residences on areas that have not been mined previously. So there's some, some small areas up above that weren't touched and uh they don't have plans for the remaining areas except for use by the family.
I, I just, I just have this vision of uh a version of butcher gardens, if, if they keep it. As you described, then it becomes a hobby for, for those folks and who knows what they come up with.
Yeah, time will tell, um, they will be planting trees in the area as part of the reclamation, so it'll eventually look a bit more uh forested.
So after this uh is approved, are they bound to keep it in the family like you mentioned, there, there's no binding of it any kind there, right?
No.
So uh, what would they be able to do in the extreme? Uh, would they be able to do, is it two and a half acre or five acre?
They have requested the five acre forestry recreation zoning, so.
So I would I guess I'm saying I take a look at the statement that they're wanting to keep it in the family is a bit of a noise thing. Has no real meaning to me from a, okay, so. Have you gotten pushed back?
No, no, we've heard from one person during the public hearing, uh, there was a question about whether groundwater could be contaminated if it was developed. Um, so uh, the response was that any construction on previously disturbed soils does require some, some study to prove that it can be done safely. Um, and so at least for the applicant's part, they're telling us they have an existing well that will serve the proposed two residences, so no new wells are proposed.
Again, that's relevant as you go, as you go forward, right?
So they, they can actually go ahead and develop twenty-one homes based on the five acre per, they could without any further review from, in terms of planning, from planning, I mean, obviously the billing codes have to be net and all that.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Thank you.
That's it, I'll see you at eleven, I guess.
And Adam, congratulations.
I see facilities maintenance on here, but maybe not, no? Yeah, okay. And I see HR. I think we, we kinda talked about maintenance last week when Mike was in, didn't we? May, maybe, okay.
Good morning, Jessica Warren, Human Resources. On the consent agenda, I have the annual renewal for the left one retiree Medicare plan through Humana. Um, this renewal is higher than it has been in years, but that's due to how Medicare has revamped the way that they pay health plans relative to prescription drugs, shifting the cost of prescription drugs to the health plan. So the renewal goes from thirty, three hundred and eleven dollars and thirty cents per member per month to four hundred and sixty-one dollars and thirty-three cents per member per month, um, which is a renewal of forty-eight point two percent. Um, however, this is still much less than we were paying previously from shifting to Humana. And this is likely, like a one-time shift of this amount and then we should see it stabilize in future years.
So I am a little bit confused, I, I have read an awful lot of boasting by the administration that they have figured out a way to negotiate lower prices for prescription drugs for Medicare. But you're just saying it will, the costs for achieving that has gone up. Not a question, just kind of a slight comment.
Just a well-placed statement, yeah, well-placed statement.
Uh, lowering, lowering prices raises the costs.
Yeah. Amazing how that works.
Repeat after me, two plus two is five.
Yeah. How many, how many, roughly how many people do we cover under this?
About fifteen, fourteen to sixteen, yeah.
And, and of those folks, we, we do have to cover nursing home care when they go into nursing home care, how many are at that point? Do you?
I do not know, Katrina in the sheriff's office um manages the Humana plans, so she would have more information on that. I'm not sure if she's online or not.
And I, we did not have a lot on home care or.
Right, and they've all gotten older.
Correct, so I, I think, I think your point is.
Do we have enough money saved up to, to still or?
We were under, underfunded.
Right.
I do know that we continue to pay less through the Humana plans and how it was structured prior. Um, and I know that that will still be the case, but yes, I mean, we cover all expenses for the left one retirees.
Kathy, do you remember offhand how much is in the reserve fund for that?
This is Kathy Funk Baxter, Finance Director, um, I don't have the exact.
Um, I don't have the exact number, but I know it's over a million dollars that we have in, in reserve, in fund balance uh, for that, for the benefits administration.
Yeah, we were looking at, uh, call it just ten people to make it easy to compute, ten people at a hundred thousand a year for the obligation. There goes your million.
Goes by very fast. Once they're all on it.
And then it goes on to the next year.
Yeah, we have, I think uh, we budget annually to transfer three hundred thousand to that account. And then in addition to that, it has a million, a little over a million dollars fund balance.
A huge obligation.
Okay.
Any other questions?
Don't think so.
Thank you.
I wonder if there's any way we could limit our liability on that by buying the equivalent of stop-loss insurance. I can't, I don't know why anybody would do that, but what would, by that, I mean, we would cap the amount we, we know that we would be subject to in the future. Anyhow. If we're concerned, I'm sure the insurance company is gonna be concerned too.
I don't think we have any other agenda. Jessica, I know you have an exec session. You wanna just take those now? Okay.
Okay, so the first request I have comes from Building and Planning. They are requesting to fill a senior planner position because the previous one just promoted to the planning manager along with any domino effect. And then the next request I have comes from District Court. They are requesting to reclassify the adult probation officer and the adult probation officer lead to new salary grades, two forty-five and two fifty-five. This is just a five percent increase on top. And they're eliminating the lead position and just making it a level two based off of experience and qualifications that the person might come. They still have that open position that they're looking to fill.
We had discussed that some time back.
Yes.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And so you've negotiated with the union on that?
Correct.
Good with that.
Okay. And those are my only two requests. I have two items under an executive session for qualifications of an applicant.
Estimated time?
Um, let's say twenty.
Okay. So executive session for qualifications of an app, applicant, we're looking at twenty minutes. Okay.
Okay, back from executive session. No decisions were rendered. Turn it over to Jessica.
Jessica Warren, Human Resources. Again, I have a couple more additional requests. First request comes from the Office of Administrative Services. They are requesting to start their applicant for finance manager at step six along with seventy five hours of vacation, which is equivalent to two weeks.
Okay.
Okay with that?
And the next request comes from Human Resources. I'm requesting to move the deputy director of human resources up two steps, which is the equivalent of a five percent increase effective October first.
Okay.
Of this year.
Of the series.
You gotta dot the i's and cross the t's.
Thank you.
Years go by fast. Yeah. We're good.
Thank you.
And I know you have another one coming over, but I think we'll just recess till till he shows up.
Okay, sounds good.
Okay, back from recess. Jessica.
Ian's back again.
He's gonna be right next door here in a few months.
Yeah.
Jessica Warren, Human Resources again. I have an additional request for an executive session for qualifications of an applicant.
So.
Let's do 10, yeah.
Okay. Okay. Okay.